Is it hot? Okay. Good evening, everyone. So we're here tonight for a special session meeting, February 4th, 2025. It is 6:31, actually. We had a little bit of technical difficulty, so made it through it really quickly, though. So appreciate your guts, Michael. We're gonna get started tonight and call this meeting to order. And we're gonna start with invitation. Mr. Roland Miners is gonna lead us in that, and we will go straight to pleasure meeting after that.
Please remove your hats.
As far as you say, my Father, we're so grateful for this gathering. We pray for our leaders and ask that you guide them to make new decisions that will bring prosperity and growth to our city. Father, we're living in times of great progress and change, and we pray that you grant us peace, unity, and goodwill to our city, state, country, and our world, so that we may feel the power of your grace and your mercy. And Father, please watch over our city staff, employees, and first responders as they go about the work of the city. And watch over all of us and keep us safe as we go about our daily lives. In heaven, we ask all of these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Lord, whose name stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have any announcements? Anybody? No news, or nothing? Everybody probably sees a new face up here. Mr. Greg Sprinkle. We had our judge swear him in. I could look at my phone.
So you said after the meeting?
Yeah. I don't recall the date exactly, but he swore in right after the meeting when we accepted the resignation. And we're glad to have you. Other than that, no other? Nobody, no announcements, no nothing? No? So we'll move past that. Citizens input related to the agenda items. I don't have any sheet, so I don't know if we've got any. If somebody does want to speak, we would like to get you the sound sheet, and you're welcome to speak. Anybody? There's chief here.
He was. There he is.
Hi. Okay. So number six, discussion and undertake action to approve or deny the sale of the older police vehicles and use the proceeds to purchase new vehicles for the department. You gotta come out of hiding sometime.
Well, they're blocking the doorway. All right, I guess you just explained it all there anyway. Selling the old cars would cost over the past...
All I did was read what your city secretary wrote down for you.
Over the past year, we spent over $22,000 on repairs on the cars. And if we can sell the cars and purchase one more new vehicle, we'll have three new vehicles that'll last up to six years. But for the next series, we won't have to worry about vehicle maintenance or rental or the problems with the cars. But most of the cars that...
Two of them, I can't really give...
Two of the cars were here when we got, when I came here. They're over 19, and most of them got over 1,000 miles on them. The one old Tahoe was bought used when I started here anyway. So what I was gonna try and do is sell all of the old ones and buy one more new one. And that way, it would be paid for, and there would be no payments on it. The other two new ones that were just purchased would be paid off in three years. So after three years, we wouldn't have no car payments for three more years. So they should last around six years if we maintain and take care of them real well. So that would cut out most of the maintenance costs and stuff. One of them, we don't budget. A lot of times, one of them costs $10,000 for an engine that we didn't have in the budget. Let's budget to pay for an engine. One of the cars has had 40,000 miles. It's had two transmissions put in, but it's under warranty. So if it runs out of warranty, then we're paying for the transmission to go in. So the way I thought that, if we did it like that, then it would save a whole lot. We would have, we could reduce the maintenance budget. Because all we really have is oil change and tires for the maintenance. Because all the rest of it would be under warranty.
How many cars are we selling?
Four.
Four. And how much do you expect to get?
Uh, I don't know. I did get with the city attorney, because they are real property. They belong to the city.
Personal property.
Yeah, personal property. So we can actually sell them on Marketplace or to other, those law enforcement on Facebook places and see if other law enforcement agencies want them. I was gonna try and, if I could bundle all for them and sell them for $50,000 for all for some other department, that's the price of one. And they would have four squad cars for their city. So...
So buying just one, right? Might even come out ahead, right? Might even says, come out ahead. They might not need that much money to be...
Well, if I sell them, I might be able to, a few places I was looking before on the vehicle. I'd be, if I can sell them for that, or even a little less, then I'll be able to pay cash for the vehicle, and it'll be fine.
Do we have a, do we have a plan for if those numbers don't match? Where, so you think you can get 50, but you only get 42, and the new car costs 48. If you get 50, we came out $2,000 ahead. If you only get 42, do we have a plan for not adding $6,000?
If I can't get the money to pay cash for the new one, I'm not, I'm not gonna sell them and buy a new one. We'll just figure out if they can take one of the other ones up, so we have another one that, you know, patch it up and see what we can do later on.
So with that being said, does that mean you would have to basically sell them as a bundle? I'm guessing? I mean, because if you sell them individually, then you only sell two. I think that's kind of where we're going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna know if we have a plan to be able to cover the delta between the two, if it comes down to that? Because it sounds like I have to sell them first before we even buy one?
Yeah.
Say, John, if you sell them separately, you'll always get more money.
Yeah.
So why don't do that?
Well, I'm gonna try that and see what offers we get for them. I tried with the dealership when we bought the other two cars. And for the four cars, he only offered $19,500. I told him, never mind, you know, we ain't taking them for four cars, not $19,000. This is all. So, because one, two of the cars we list on Marketplace, they're going from $24,000 to $36,000. Or $30,000, $24,000 to $30,000, so...
And so these cars, they're just sitting right now?
Yeah. I think somebody mentioned something about one of the cars we leave out here is a decoy. That's why we leave it out there, the decoy.
And we're paying full, or we have just liability insurance on them, or we're just full coverage?
Well, it's through the TML insurance. No matter how many cars we got or whatever, it's all the same all the time. So, but we are paying for it. Of course, they're exempt, so registration is not really... So I was just gonna try to get the approval to try and sell them and then see how, before I started anything, get y'all's approval, and then see if I can sell them for you while we're working and stuff for them. Then when I'll go another route, I'll come back before and tell y'all. Say that didn't work out, and we're gonna go there again.
I would say just we sell them separately and see how much money we can get. It's like selling land, you know? Cut it out and make even more money than that.
Well, that's why I want to talk to her to make sure that, you know, rather than auctioning, because I go into auctions, and they won't break much at an auction. Nobody really wants to, everybody's looking for a bargain at an auction. So try and sell them outright to individuals and on those group places, on eBay and maybe even talk to Renee Bates Auction here. They usually burn a lot. I've talked to Johnny over at Quinley, and they sold an old water truck. And they get brought, it's been sitting up for three, four years, and they brought almost $4,000 just for the old trucks they now buy on Renee Bates.
Anybody else got anything?
Thanks a motion, motion we approve the sale.
I'll say a bit.
Motion made by Chris, second by Chad. We got votes on that?
Let me ask you. Sale, sale by, sell it separately?
It's just to approve the sale. We have the responsibilities. He has a responsibility to sell in the most commercially reasonable way to maximize the money. So I don't wanna say he has to do individually if, for some reason, he can get a better deal by doing a bundle. So it is really just, he has to sell it the best way he can, and we just wanna let him be able to do that. Yeah.
Okay.
Chad, go.
Everybody voting yes. You did all the way across.
Fine.
All right.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. That takes us to number seven, discussion and undertake action acceptance of resignation of Mike Stafford for Public Works Director.
Want to see if I could read something to you guys, just real quick. It'll take a minute or two. But good evening. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve West Pawking and its citizens as Public Works Director for the past four years. And I mean that. After considerable reflection, I feel that I can no longer continue to work in an environment where tyrannical bullying, hostility have become a constant part of the daily operations. The ongoing mistreatment coupled with the toxic atmosphere has created a untenable work environment that has affected both my mental and physical well-being. While I value the professional experiences and opportunities that I have had with the city of West Pawking, I can no longer tolerate the ongoing negative impact this environment has had on me personally and professionally. It is clear that the hostile nature of the workplace is not something that can be addressed within my role. I believe resigning is the best decision for my health and future. I hope that in the future, West Pawking City Council members can take necessary steps to create a more respectful and supportive environment for its employees. I wish the Public Works staff and all city staff success moving forward. Should any council members want to discuss any issues and more, please feel free to reach out to me to discuss. Note, the city has invested a lot of time, money, training to develop your current staff. The city already has people in place that are more than capable to step up and fill any open positions you have. JD has been training for two years to take my position. You already have two operators in training who are ready to go test for their license. And of course, I have made an offer to carry both plants as a contract operator. I will continue to train both operators until I am no longer needed. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I think we miss you, man.
Thank you.
Is something we can go in back and talk about?
We can go in the back and talk about anything on this agenda as far as, as far as, unless I'm wrong, council.
Some of them, no, but with your personality.
It's a personality issue.
I'd like to discuss some things back there real quick, just to make sure we're...
So you're asking that we go to executive?
Yes.
We're making a motion? Would that be a form of a motion?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're going to make a motion and get a...
Make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss this.
We got it. Okay. All in favor, you got the motion in a second? So we're gonna turn and go back 6:46 to executive session.
Okay, we're gonna return back to our special session meeting at 7:08. We're still at 7:00, discussion and our action, except for resignation of Mike Stafford as Public Works Director. Any discussion on that?
I just want to say thank you, you know, thank you for the service you've provided for so many years, this city and the people here. We very appreciate it.
Thank you. I make the motion, we accept Mike Stafford's resignation.
I'll second it.
Who's going first?
I don't think so.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by James Timp, we got votes on that?
As you gotta be. For X, Y, or Z.
I didn't answer the second.
You still have the vote.
Chris Burkett.
You got one there? All right, that takes us to a break, discussion ended, took action, publicizing job opening, Public Works Director and Job Necessities.
So we have not posted yet. So we need to get it posted, no matter what we do here, just to make sure we're moving on.
For that position, for Public Works Director position?
Yes.
I would, I would think so, and then we make sure we have, you know, some requirements in there.
Yeah, the listing.
They would meet what our Public Works Director had. I mean, that would only be, to me, the wisest thing we would do, to meet or exceed.
So what's after?
Those credentials information, what we can get back.
Water sewer licensing, job responsibilities, has to go, would go on TML. The question is if you want to run it anywhere else. TML's a good place for those kinds of.
It goes down by the job description.
Oh, well, what we need to know is, we, it's C for surface water, right, and D for the water sewer, or the sewer?
A for wa, A for surface water, C for sewer.
Okay. Yeah, so it needs to have those requirements, there are, I recently was looking for different area, but there's a lot of places that have got similar posted listings. So you can kind of start looking at that as a guidepost, and we should work out exactly what we need, it shouldn't be super complicated.
I would think between the three of us, we could figure out that posting together. Wouldn't be a real deal, I mean, I don't think the council's gonna want us to bring that back to them to approve.
No, it's just, yeah.
We need to get it posted, just so we can see who's out there, no matter what we're doing here, just so we have some idea of what's up there. I make the motion, the publicize the job opening.
Second?
Second.
Where do you go with Chris and Green? You got votes on that?
Jay, Jay. Chris Burkett.
Okay. Okay. Discussion and our action interim appointment to manage public works or specific areas within public works.
This is?
Yeah.
This is what we're currently on.
So the last page is the current, front two pages are what's, have an idea of what it would look like. I may have stapled it back. So it, it's labeled at the very bottom of the page, what is current in the Public Works Department. The, one with council is, that is what it is, there's not necessarily any changes to be made there.
The, uh...
So, I have a question, so the field boss, right now we got one field boss, why do we need two in the future?
One boss.
Well, this says two.
Is it the current one?
Is this the current one, or is it the old?
That's one of the top. JD, that's the field boss now, so in the future, why do we have two?
I think it's more, more vacancy here, is what I'm saying, more vacancy here, there are two.
This one they can take here?
Because currently we have field boss and a crew chief.
That's one there, we're here, this is what I'm saying, why do we have two?
Because this is vacant, I think that's what it's saying.
Yes.
Because this is vacant, we need two field bosses, if we, once this is filled, we might need two.
So we have one here.
Then we could go back to this. And we go back to this. Then we don't go back to that, it's just one field boss.
So.
But this kind of gives us a... We were kind of talked about whether or not we ever would be split up, and this is kind of with that in mind.
So, sticking on the agenda, the idea in my mind would be try to hire, to promote from within. And of course JD has been doing it, as Mike said, for two years now underneath him. I would think that that would be the route that we would try to go, of course, we still post it in case JD gets in there and doesn't think he can do it, or can't do it. But I think that we at least look at internally giving him the, the chance at it as interim, and, and see what, if he can do it. JD, what are your thoughts on that, do you think you can handle it?
Yeah, I believe so.
How long have you been, JD?
Where?
How long have you been working here?
I've gone on three years.
How many?
Three.
Where are you at in your licenses?
I'm scheduled for C.
And that's for water?
Yes.
That is currently scheduled? With a date or no date?
Well, you don't really get a date, once you submit that application.
Okay.
You just wait for them to approve it.
What about your water sewer?
I haven't taken a sewer class, but we have, DJ has went to a sewer class.
And we gotta get that license right.
For the wastewater?
Yeah.
Is that something that you're ready to do, or is that down the road, how far down the road?
All I've got to do is take the residency and then schedule a test.
For, for council's gonna, what's the timeline?
Yes.
The residency is a two-hour course, that's fifty bucks, and then your application will be at 1:13, and then upon approval, you're scheduled.
And I know that that subject to TCEQ is kind of strange on that, it's you, you ask them when you have the, the light of getting to take that test, and then they tell you when you can.
Correct.
So, once you submit the application, I know you were kind of at their, what is your intention to take that?
JD, you know, every aspect of the job, like, Michael, like, water, sewers, streets, parks.
Do you have any other questions for JD?
No.
I think if we look at doing something like this, I, I would, I would like to see some kind of, I hate to say it, but daily reports of what your, how you got your day planned out. What you accomplished, what you don't accomplish, why you don't accomplish it, follow the tools.
You say that right there is what I would fill out, and this right here is what I would have done for that.
And with those, we'll be able to pull data from his, because he's gonna kind of pull a summary of what his crew did, and from there, we can work together pulling the data to get a good council report, to get an idea who's where, how long we spent there, what's been going on.
So is this something you came up with, or?
Kind of a group effort, yes, so I, I created those reports after last month's meeting, there was questions on if we can put that in Homebase, and I felt like more of a detailed experience.
Are these reports that you showed me, you piggyback off your husband's?
Yes. Yes, sir. And then I presented JD to where you can kind of get an idea of what's going on with the crew, and I felt like that would be something, I think, we even wanted to make one edit, and on the crew, we wanted to put what truck they're, what truck they're driving.
So when we talked about this in the last meeting, we also talked about, we've already, we're paying for a clock-in, clock-out app, Homebase, is that what it's called? That app does have a spot in there where we can put notes in there, that's live, boom, 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 right from your phone. This would be great if we could put it in a place where we could electronically input it, but what the problem is gonna be, is trying to get people to hold on to paper, right? This is something that Michael's, you know, voiced his frustration to me with, that he's trying to get, you know, guys to hold on to their, and I get it, they're out in the field, it's hard to keep those things and keep them straight and all that. So, I, I think that we need to try to lean back to something that we're using, keep this stuff streamlined.
And I think fair with Homebase is that, if you get a summary of what you've done, but from there, we would spend more time looking at each shift and each individual person, that it's not gonna get a lot of characters, to be as detailed as, for example, those reports should be detailed.
Right, and, and I understand that, but I'm, I'm afraid if we, I guess, if we're being honest, right? One of the things that we have been asking for in council the last couple of times was the truck, the truck inspection reports, and those have been subpar pretty much almost every time. You know, so if we're gonna try to implement another report with several different places to fill in information, I think we're gonna be setting our people up for failure, and maybe, that's my fear. And, and the only reason why I mentioned Homebase is because Homebase is something that they're already using every day, right? We're trying to get everybody more, I guess, app-friendly or using their phone-friendly, we're having to use it to read meters. I was, the, the thought in my mind, from my business experience, is to not throw too many different tasks on people, but try to stay within the same area, and to make their, you know, they already have to deal with their shovels and all their other tools, but now we're gonna give them two more tools. I do think it's a great thing, you, I talked about, it'd be awesome if we could figure out a way to get it into a document that could be in Homebase or in, maybe even Fundity. We don't know, that could be an option, we're not sure about that, but I, I think in the interim, we could definitely already have been using Homebase.
Well, I just...
And, and it's correctness, right, it, it's, we're not saying, we're not saying write a, a novel, we're saying leak thirteen eighty-two, whatever drought.
I think if we want to talk about what reports we want them to do, we should put that on the next agenda. we should put that on the next agenda. Because we're talking about who we're gonna do as an interim appointment or if we wanna promote. And I don't wanna get off.
I don't, I don't, I'm fine with that, I don't disagree with that. I mean, that could've been nipped in the bud earlier when it was brought up.
Can we not say promote under these cert, these alternatives that we get some kind of report showing plan versus actual?
Well, I think that's where you're going, Chris, when you're thinking about. It sounds like you were talking about maybe trying to look at making a motion.
I think you can absolutely say, you know, discussion with who you would want to, say JD, we're wanting to do an interim appointment. We can definitely talk about what it is, his plan is. But I don't think that we have the ability to require a certain report based on this agenda.
So let's move past that and we can put that on another agenda at some other point. We can stay on this same topic. So one thing I would like to suggest and everybody think about and look at, we're talking about JD's been here two years, right?
Three.
Three?
Three years.
Going on three years.
Okay, so we're going on three years. You just ran for council, correct? So you just canvassed the city in November of twenty twenty-four?
October, November, right?
October, November. You canvassed the city October, November twenty twenty-four. That would be correct. So during that time of canvassing the city, all the complaints and aggravation that you were given, that was fed to you and whoever you were canvassing the city with, JD played a big part in our city public works department at that time. So we need to, I, I... What? What's, what do you?
I bet I just...
I'm asking the council to take consideration. Before you make a motion, think about those things. So maybe we need to try to put something, a structure in place and say there's a timeframe that we need to try to work and coach and put structure in place with this person. At the same time, we're also going to be posting for the job in the case that we're not setting an interim, we're not saying a person is in a set position yet. Because if we have a public works, a qualified public works director that walks in tomorrow, we don't wanna pass that up.
I, that, yeah, but that's part of what an interim appointment is. That's the next thing to say is, you know, we're talking about a ninety-day appointed period, we come back and evaluate. Would obviously introduce some interviews.
I think that's what I just said. And that's what the council would have to decide on what that timeframe is.
One thing that is important here is we, in picking an interim appointment, you guys do have to have B licensing. So we do have to, we're gonna have to con, if we, whoever we...
We gotta be licensed contracted now. We just, we would have to contact that person and see if that's gonna stay in place.
What is your timeline? I know if you get your C, how long does it take to get to the B or an A?
Years of service.
Yeah, I've got plenty of years of service.
Okay.
So as soon, as soon as I get done testing for C, I can just go to class for, which I don't want, I don't plan on doing the B. I plan on skipping it and going to A.
Something about math and control.
Yeah, the fail rate for B is much higher.
JD is A cover B. It'll be good if you have A.
A is the top line.
A is the top.
You make anything?
So we need to put it with a timeframe on it, is what you're thinking? To review it at a March council meeting?
That's up to you as council. I was just saying that I would, I would suggest if I was in one, if I was in that position, I would say, given, given the history, and that's why I was trying to make sure we all understood new history. Right? The public works department that we're talking about is current and was current during that time that you shared the things you shared. So we need to make sure that we're, as a city, setting this person up for success, not failure. And throwing them in there. I mean, we've already, we've already threw one person, you know, into that fire. So let's do it a little bit different, is my suggestion.
Do you think interim can re-review it at our March council meeting?
That would be up for you guys to decide.
Unless we get an application in, we need to have a special session to sit down and re-review that?
I mean, typically, there have been times where I've seen that people will actually, even though a current employee, they will still do a probationary period for a position that is, you know, being promoted to. Right? So it still protects them, they're still in the city, they still work here. But that position is not locked in until that probationary period is passed. And whatever said, set points that are set forth, those, those are checked off.
And we, you don't have any concerns?
No.
You had a chance to get with the crew? There's no concerns out there?
No, I got the respect of all them.
Anybody else have any questions? Make the motion to approve JD as interim public works director to be re-reviewed at a March council meeting? Unless we get something that comes into our job opening that we need to have a special session to re-review it?
What's the mouth?
It was.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by James. You got votes?
Judge go. Chris work in. JD, you know if you need anything, we're here.
All right, so that takes us to number nine. Discussion, interaction, interim, no, I got that, I didn't check. Ten, we're getting closer to the end, guys. Discussion and action to discuss the role of the mayor and abilities of the mayor to implement processes and procedures to address deficiencies with the city employees and possibility to add Mayor Pro Ten to these duties. So I guess I'll explain this. It pretty much explained itself towards the end. What, what, what that means there is, I mean, I don't know how many of you have read the TNO rules and see where, if you've looked at this O R chart, this O R chart is, is, it's correct in a way, but sort of not correct in a way either, right? Because the mayor has to do some different things. And the council, yes, votes on those things. But there's things that the mayor is responsible for. I am, I am responsible for and held to a standard, just like the licensed people are, the health and safety of the city. Right? So if something goes wrong in this city with health and safety, whether it be water, sewer, whatever, infrastructure, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be on the line before any of the council members. So therefore, the reason why this is, this hierarchy is set up the way it is, and I don't know if any, have any of y'all read that, what the mayor's, I mean, there's, there's a section that talks about the mayor being as in the same position as a CEO of the city. And kind of, have you not read that?
Oh, here's the thing, the mayor has emergency authority. That's absolutely true. The council is the ultimately the decision maker for everything. And that's why I always say, Kevin has a very unenviable world-class beginning to list of all of the citizen complaints. He doesn't, like, the mayor of Taipei cities, they don't have as much authority as like when you're talking about a city manager of a bigger city, where they get a lot more day-in, day-out responsibilities. In Taipei cities, the mayor gets to do, you know, Taipei cities under the statute are allowed to do what they're statutorily allowed to do, which is different than a big, what we call homeworld city. Councils and inside these kind of Taipei cities will delegate certain responsibilities to the mayor if they want to expand what the mayor's normal responsibilities are. And right now, I don't know of any, what those ordinances are or what your general practices typically are. But just kind of going from square one, the mayor doesn't have as much day-to-day authority. The council makes all of the decisions for the city.
So that's where I think that we all need to read and really understand. Because there's no shells, there's, there's no shells in there. And I, and I respect, and I respect your, I respect your education in your position, right? But with, with what, with the mayorship that you just explained, that's a kiss and beg, that's not the city, that's a bigger city than what we are. Right?
No.
So when you go into a bigger city, then those mayors are gonna have more kiss and beg responsibilities.
Well, it's, no, that's just, that's what this is. That's not important, like I said, that is, I mean, I, I understand that that's not as exciting. But, but that is, the council does make the decisions for the city. And like I said, this council can...
That's correct, but the council also entrusts, and the citizens also entrust in the mayor to be there for the city and to be present for the city.
I don't, I don't disagree. All I'm saying is the council can elect to, and I've seen it before, we'll have ordinance, as the council say, they'll delegate additional authorities. And it can be specific to certain things. But I don't know that we have any of those.
We, we do have, this was, there was an ordinance and I haven't counted yet. And I've been, I haven't been able to spend time here in the city. But we did pass an ordinance that kind of went into this at some point. But that's why I wanna bring this to the council, right? Go ahead.
So the, isn't this something like the, the US, you know, the, the condors make some rules, you know, they can really control the whole thing. But once the rules are made, then the CEO, you know, the president.
Implement, that's exactly it.
That's his role, isn't it?
Right, implement the rules that you guys make, correct.
So I've never seen a system work without a CEO. It never happens. You know, sometimes you put two CEOs in place, never works. So I think he's, he's always CEO. I think, you know, he should be able to do the things we need to do. And if he's, say, out of line for some reason, then council can always say, no, we can't do it. But I think he started out with full authority to do it.
And that's what I was coming to council for, to kind of get that clarity and that support without having to, in the interim of trying to keep things going on a daily basis. And, and to be honest with you, I've already done those things. I help, I help every person that's on our city team in somehow, some way, in a, in a daily role of helping get something done. Right? So, I mean...
I, yeah, and I, I don't disagree with that. What, what the question was is what was the authority breakdown? And that's what I feel like, that's what I'm saying. I do, you know...
But the council, but the council can kind of say, look, we want you to keep us going in the right direction. Give that, give that, just as it was written, that daily, that daily authority to be able to make some changes if needed. And, and any of those would always come to the council. But the reason why I mentioned the mayor Pro Ten is in a situation where I feel that the mayor Pro Ten would need to be involved, I would definitely call him, have him involved with me in that. That way, whenever something was needed to be brought to the council, we would both be able to explain it. And you wouldn't just have to get it from one person.
So I mean...
Does that make sense?
What you would need...
I think, I think you're understanding.
It makes sense.
What you would need to do is an ordinance discussing what these daily things are. Because that's what you would be...
Actually, there's not an ordinance as far as T M L says. The, the T M L tells you that the council can't give the mayor that authority on a daily basis. It clearly states it.
Right, but that has to be done through an actual process. And that would be an ordinance resolution. I'm, I'm just explaining the legal side of this. So we, we needed to do, if you wanted to delegate that authority, we would have to do that in a written form. And I'll have that.
The process is...
And I don't know what we're talking about as far as what processes and procedures. I would be very skeptical of anything that said a broad swath of authority for, for processes, what does that mean?
I think we have to word it correctly. We can say, instead of saying, we can do anything and everything, we can say, he can do the things, the day-to-day operations. Manage the day-to-day operations.
What is that though? I mean, does that mean...
That means is managing the employees. And if there are customer complaint, constituent complaints coming in, you should be able to say, okay, let it go to the, to the lawyer or let it, you know, let me answer this. Things of that nature, but anything that creates a rule.
And these are things that are already that I've done already. I just want to get clarity, right?
What things?
Did you hear what that gentleman was just saying?
No, you said these are the things.
These are the things that I've already done.
Enter this, enter this stuff.
Exactly, exactly what this gentleman, these are the things I was saying. These are the things that I've already done, what this gentleman just explained.
Constituent complaints, managing, I, I'm, I'm not being awesome. I'm, I'm trying to get from y'all what you're wanting to do. What are these specific, like, they're saying day-to-day things, but day-to-day things are really broad.
I think we'll have to narrow it down.
I mean, because I certainly, I mean, certainly, Kevin, you're not trying to, you don't wanna be convoluted about wind of my staples, you know? That's what I mean.
So let me say this, though. So at this point, we can say, management of people. And we just put some broad categories, management of people. Any expenses under certain amount. So, you know, if he's gonna spend a million dollars, then obviously just, you know?
Right.
So if he's going to, you put a certain, certain limit, he's gotta do that. Things that, you know, he can do, things of that nature, you know? And he can't make a new rule without the consent of people, you know? If it's part of the ordinance...
Can I ask your question? It would be ethically in within reason. Okay, so, so you've just made a statement that brought something up. So what you're saying is that when Chief Alder came in and said, I wanna sell these four vehicles and buy this room, I don't have to ask council, I just have to have Kevin. But that, I mean, is that what you, that's what he just said.
Well, he said, set a limit, set a limit on...
And I'll be honest with you, that limit to me would be like probably five thousand dollars or less to, to be able to approve a purchase or something.
But again, though, what does it mean? You don't want to have to get permission. I don't want Amanda calling you because they're on a paperclips in that office because that's under five thousand dollars.
I think, I think that's, I think that's kind of an assinight comment. But, but I think, I think the role, I think the role of, I think the role of spending should be controlled at some point.
It is, that's why we have a logic process. That's why you have a city secretary, that's why you have those things.
Look, this was brought up for several reasons. So we, you know, the reason why I brought this up was Mary showed Chris and I something in her office that was a quote from electrical contractor for sixty-eight hundred dollars. Okay? It was a quote. And I explained to her, well, that's not a quote because the work is already done. So you should have already paid that fee. Like, no, it's a quote. And that's what brought this up. And that's why I wanted to make sure, because whenever, let me speak. That's why I wanted to make sure what was going on. So I sent a few emails, right? And, and I would be more than happy for the council, Chris was included in these emails. So this all stems from asking questions, asking for things, asking to, and saying, look, let's not, let's not issue no P O's without Chris and I approval on it. Because at the moment, I don't know how many of you guys have looked at our budgets lately, but to no fault of anybody in our cities, it's because we're going into a new system and everything is not recorded. So, you know, I mean, I, I guess for some reason it's been missed that I've got a little over five years, I think, in the council. And, and ever since that we've got on here, our budgets have gotten better and better and better. I'll be honest with you, I feel like I had a hand in that. I'm really good at budgets. I got many years professional experience in management of business. So I feel very, very confident that I've, I've played a hand in that, not counting the possible thousands of dollars that I've saved personally with either my resources or one hand helping the public works department.
I don't think anyone's...
I'm not done, I'm not done, hang on. So the reason why this was brought up was because of the emails that were sent asking for specific information, right? I think one of the emails I asked, could you please send Chris and I the financials, most current financials? Most current financials. And I, I'm not going, I'm not even going to go off to say what it said, but there was pushback. Right? And, and was told, I'll get them when I'm not busy, this, that, and the other. A lot of that was created because of what has happened here tonight. And there's some animosity that was created within our city, and what I want to make sure is that as your mayor, that has investment in this city, that I live here, I want to make sure that we don't, as a council, have something that goes awry, and then you have to wait and find out about it in the next month's meeting. Right? I have everybody's phone number, if something, if something was to come up, I would be like, look, we're going to have a meeting and, and call a special meeting. But, but we can't, you know, we can't have something that is taking place as such as right now and just wait and hope that it's going to get better.
So we've already, you have the authority to call special meetings, and you have the authority already to contact them when there are issues. That's already a thing, but what I'm trying to gather is, if this is something the council wants to proceed with, I need instructions as to what those authorities are. I don't think that my point about what your authority to say is a reasonable purchase is unreasonable. I understand what you're saying about a quote, but, and that is, I mean, if we need it, wait. That is something that if we need to have quotes that are submitted, then that's a process that we need to have, where if some people have to submit bids, we absolutely need that.
Exactly.
But, but what I'm saying simply is, this is a very broad thing to have added, and I haven't even, we haven't even talked about it. We have to have something in writing. If we're, whatever we're talking about doing, the council's got to give me some feedback on what they want to do, what authorities we're talking about granting that are different. And you can't just vote that, yeah, this is this broad swamp of, we're going to let, we're going to let him, everything go.
Well, I think there's no, there's no dispute about the need for a CEO. So that's, there's no dispute about it. Now, the question is, what are the jobs you use? That's what, you know, what are these authorities? We could probably do a Google search and see the mayor's authorities for a classic city. Something, whatever.
Asset management.
Yeah, so come up with something, you know, and then say, this is what we normally find. Just write it down, and then we'll make another motion in that next meeting. You know? But just give him the authority he needs to do the thing. Because if he wants to have a meeting, it's not that easy, it's not going to happen within two weeks' notice. You know, all of us, if you get all of us together, it's going to take two weeks, get him.
And in all reality, I already have that authority. By law, by state statute, no, I have that authority to, to set policies. I have that, yes, I have that authority to say, POs will not be issued unless I'm notified.
Well, you don't. I, I don't, this is, I know, I mean.
Well, you and I can speak about that.
Yeah, I mean, we should, we should have talked about this sooner, but no.
Shame on you if you don't, you believe. No, and we can't, and that's what's going to happen. Right? If we're, if we're just, if we're spending money and we don't have so many business minded, watching the money, then.
This can do dysfunction, that's, that's a no. So come up with something, come up with a list of things that should be used. We got to come up with something, and you'll vote on it.
Y'all are going to vote on it. It's not, that's not, I don't tell y'all what policy to do, y'all, or the council is the decision maker.
We'll come up with something in that case.
So then, I, I would make a suggestion, somebody moves us to a different agenda.
So it needs to be a motion to table this at this time.
Right.
I make the motion, we table number ten for a future agenda. That's a good one.
Any sense in then putting on the agenda?
Yes, we did have one gentleman.
No, I didn't. Who made the motion? James Champ, y'all got votes?
Judge go.
Motion carried. Can we have a paper pen? Sir, could you state your name for us, please?
My name's Jimmy Van Hux, owner of property six oh five Wild Valley. It's there behind what used to be the volunteer fire department. I've owned it for about thirty-five years. I actually owned the property that was next to it up until twenty twenty, which I sold. And I actually sold that property due to the city always sending me notices complaining about trash in the yard, people dumped things in the yard, the cops had to kick people out of there, and I gave nobody the authority to be there. And I live in North Dakota, so they took the time to send all these letters up there, threaten me with jail and all kinds of things. Since the property's been bought by another individual, this is what the property used to look like. That's the field there, it looks like a nice serene park.
Who is this property?
It's a six oh five Wild Valley, it's behind what used to be the volunteer fire department.
Yes, Grace Mechanical.
Yeah, by Grace Mechanical, behind Grace Mechanical there. In twenty twenty-three, he, the individual that purchased this property.
Sir, excuse me, just one second. Guys, remember, we, we can't banner back and forth with him during this time, this is citizens' input, so we have to let him say what he's going to say within his timeframe, and that's all we can do. We can't answer questions, we can't ask questions.
Correct. So in twenty twenty-three, he decided to make a commercial parking lot out of that empty lot that I just passed around. He's got five different huge dump trucks back there that he parks in the midst of, of filling in a creek also, has made this parking lot. He's got a thousand gallon diesel fuel tank that's there beside a creek that he filled in, as you can see here. I don't know that that's authorized, but according to the code enforcement here, there's no codes enforcing this. This is illustrations off of the internet that shows that he is running a trucking company from that address. So that is absolutely a commercial business that's being run from there, and I can assure you that nobody in this room wants to live next door to that, when I used to have a park next door to me. He has that thing lit up like a used car lot every night. There's trucks coming and going early morning, coming in, they're destroying the roads. I think that's something that you guys would be concerned about, and I can show you pictures of the roads where it's just washed out, where he's driven in there. More importantly, the issue with the flooding, though, I've requested documentation. I spoke with Shannon on the sixth, and I've yet to hear back anything about the documentation. I have a statute of limitations on this. The individual said that he was going to fix the, the damage, but now he's not, so I need to take him to court. So it's up to you guys to file, and I know there's lots of talk back and forth with him. Police went out there because he threatened the, the head of the water department at one time. He ran him off, so they wouldn't even talk to this individual, to make him dig the creek out until the police were there. So with the police being there, there should be at least some sort of nine-one-one record. There should be some sort of violations that you guys sent this individual, because I'm sure he's not had any kind of permits for any of this stuff. And really, I'm just disappointed in the city that that's like, it's taken a month. I've written on your little city website, I've made calls every day, left messages, no return call. I spoke with the mayor today, is the first person that called me back, and I had to go to exchange to get him on Facebook. I shouldn't have to do that. Somebody from the city should have, you know, made my request and called me, at the very least. And so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Is that the only one?
You guys keep those pictures and take a look at them. And like I said, I think it's up to the city to look into this, not for me to find the walls. I mean, it's an environmental issue with that thousand gallon tank.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to number twelve. Make the motion again. Chris made the motion.
Give it a second, Randy.
Randy. You got votes on that?
Yes.
Chris, we're good, thank you.